Yes, sir, we are now recording. Yes, sir, we are now recording.
Well. Everybody, Happy New Year, welcome back. We will get the meeting started here at six P M. We'll call for order and we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Let's see, who should we have? The pledge of allegiance, Chief. Can you give the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief, for reading us. Getting to us. All right, um, if you have everybody logged in who's here, I appreciate that, Department of Customs officials. I look for a motion in a second. December second, twenty twenty four Village Board Meeting. And file the October twenty third, twenty twenty four Parks and Recreation Board. The October twenty third, twenty twenty four Police and Fire Commission. The November thirteenth, twenty twenty four Architectural Review Board Meeting minutes as presented. Second, we have a motion and a second, any changes, questions? On those minutes. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And that motion carries. Despite time, we uh will certainly like to hear from people who would like to be heard on any item. Uh that's either on the agenda or not on the agenda. I do see that we have the Brady's here this evening. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Mr. Ross, do you have anything to say tonight? You're good, all right, thank you. Okay, if you would like, come on up to the podium, uh, we do have two minutes limit on us, but if it goes a little longer, we'll give you some time, extra time.
I'll try.
Okay, thank you, and please state your name and address.
Bonnie Brady, three nine nine Streamside Court.
Sure, good. If it might be where I'm also, thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm just gonna read, cuz I'm nervous. I'm not sure how often the typical Grafton resident needs to speak in front of the village board, but this is our second time having to defend the integrity of our property. In my opinion, this is too, too many times. I'm here tonight to let you all know that my husband and I are extremely disappointed in the recent clear cutting of the area along the south side of our property that changed the landscape forever. Our privacy, property value, and quality of life has been drastically altered. If thirty years start a lot, this area looked like it does today, we would never have built our house here. I'm sad to say that I hate the way that my property looks now, and I hate living with them. Not only are we disappointed in the lack of communication from the Public Works Department, we have been told by the Public Works Department that the reason for the clear cutting was due to one of our neighbors making a complaint that they couldn't see oncoming traffic from the west when stopped at the stop sign on the corner of Streamside Court and Cedar Creek Road. As far as we know, there has never been a complaint in thirty years, nor has there ever been an accident at this stop signs. The speed limit is marked at twenty-five miles per hour, which gives drivers plenty of time to plow, check for oncoming traffic, and safely make a left turn. Why was this one person given priority over us? Why was there no communication with us about the plan to satisfy this one residence complaint? Don't we pay taxes to the center of the road? And therefore, shouldn't we have at least been shown the courtesy of a warning of what was coming? The extreme and unnecessary clear cutting in this area was an overreaction to something that could have been rectified by a simple trimming of vegetation along the necessary length of road. This unilateral decision seemed to have been done with only a village engineer walking along the street, deciding to remove the vegetation with absolutely no regard for how this would affect our property and privacy. When I spoke to the village engineer while this work was being done, I was told that it's not her job to block our view from the road. I was also told that this isn't Public Works Department job to inform everyone to uh to any changes that may affect their property. Why wouldn't the Public Works Department, as public employees, want to support taxpayers and residents of Grafton? As far as replacing our privacy and the vegetation that we've ripped out, we'd like to see a more natural approach. A sea of grass and a couple of saplings would not give us anywhere close to what has been lost. It will also not help with water drainage or natural habitat. With some creativity and a little time, a simple plan to return this area to something that blends in more with the natural area across the street farther west is possible. Fast-growing arborites, red twig dogwood, and other dense-growing native shrubs could be installed. We're willing to work with the Public Works Department on ideas and even help plant something that will give us back our privacy of thirty years. We want to return this landscape to its more natural state. There was no reason for this extreme resolution to one neighbor's complaint that left us exposed to Cedar Creek Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we appreciate you, uh, your comment, um, we can't have any action or discussion on this. I did, uh, inform you that you may wish to go to Public Works Committee and also discuss that with them. Thank you. Um, and we'll go to, uh, anyone else wishing to be heard? Very good, we'll go to business presented by the president. Just wanna thank the trustees for reaching out to me and checking in on me while I had my knee surgery. All is good, uh, thank you very well, wishes, and if everybody, uh, uh, we get back to work here and everything's going well, so thank you very much. We're at item number six, um, the village presentation of accreditation award to the Grafton Police Department, thank you.
Actually, I would like to go ahead and turn it over to, um, the, the Wiley representative here this evening, um, and Chief Cappanera himself. I guess, just from a administrative standpoint, kudos to the Grafton Police Department for achieving this accreditation. Um, having worked in other communities in which they pursued the accreditation, I understand at arm's length, the amount of time, energy, and effort that goes into, um, achieving this accreditation. Everything from policies and procedures to infield practices, um, to in-office practices are reviewed, right down to, in essence, um, the quality of their facilities. So it is very comprehensive, uh, uh, review process, and with that being said, uh, the Grafton Police Department came through with flying colors, and tonight is the culmination of that process. So from an administration standpoint, I'd like to say kudos to Chief and his staff for achieving this accreditation, but that said, I would like to turn it over uh, to you folks for the, uh, presentation of the accreditation.
Thank you. And we'll probably snap a picture of you guys.
Well, thank you trustees for, uh, having me today. I'm, my name is Jeff Inges, I'm the police chief at the City of the Grove Police Department. Uh, our department is also accredited, uh, I am on the board for the, uh, Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group, I'm the Police Executive Group Representative. So my presentation, uh, that I have for you tonight starts with a little history. In nineteen ninety-five, the Wisconsin Chiefs of Police Association created the first draft of the accreditation standards. The intent at that time was to bring out the best law enforcement practices in the entire state of Wisconsin. And then Independent Governing Board was established, it was called the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group, better known as Wiley at this point, and it was this established in nineteen ninety-six. The board is now comprised and was then six of sixteen different members. That includes the City Administrators Association, the FBI National Academy, the Wisconsin Professional Teams Association, the Department of Justice Training and Standards Bureau, in addition to the Crime Victims Rights Board, the Police Executive Group, the Wisconsin District Attorneys Association, someone from the four-year colleges, the two-year colleges, and then our insurance providers. The Grafton Police Department began its accreditation process towards the end of twenty twenty-two. This involved discussing the associated pros and cons that come with accreditation and recognizing the professionalism that comes with preparing for and actually achieving them. The department then had to identify an accreditation manager, Ellen Whalen, she's with us tonight. They received the required training, began making sure their policies and procedures were in line with all the accreditation standards. The department then scheduled their assessment for twenty twenty-four. Since this was Grafton PD's initial accreditation, the assessment team comprising of several highly-trained assessors and law enforcement professionals themselves, visited your department for three days, assessing approximately two hundred and sixty-two different standards and six hundred and fifty-five different dimensions. All of these meet the best law enforcement practices. Following the assessment, the team leader then presents a written and verbal report to the governing board, who then votes on the findings. Following Grafton PD's assessment from back in September tenth through the twelfth of twenty twenty-four, the Wiley board voted unanimously to accredit your police department. This was a great achievement for your police department, especially considering they were able to do that in just about eighteen months, it's quite a bit of work. While taking in this news, I ask you to please consider this. There's approximately five hundred and sixty-four law enforcement agencies in the state of Wisconsin, and only fifty-four of them are actually accredited. So as a result, this award places your police department in a lead company with law enforcement agencies all across the state. Before I present the department with their recognition, I just wanna give a couple of quotes that came from the assessors in the final report. Number one, the staff of the Grafton Police Department showed excellent cooperation to the assessment team in a manner that was consistent with the principles that guided both your community and their professional relationships. Number two, it was clear during the course of their visit that the police department prides itself on the level of professionalism and the service it provides to the citizens of Grafton. And then number three, the assessors were introduced to some programs that are definitely worthy of some special mention right now. Some of those programs are as follows, the peer support team, the department chaplain, neighborhood services program, coffee with a cop, faith and blue outreach, vocal with the chief. The department also participates in numerous community events. Now, what happens next? The police department has already entered into the next step, and that's reaccreditation. This will entail showing proofs for those same standards, those same dimensions, but for the next three years. So at this time, on behalf of the entire Wiley board, I'm here, and I would like to say congratulations to Chief Cappanera and all the members of the Grafton Police Department for this deserved recognition. And with that, they received this plaque right here that goes through, talks about the Wiley accreditation group, and it mentions that, uh, Grafton Police Department has fully demonstrated its voluntary commitment to law enforcement excellence by its compliance to a body of standards deemed essential to the protection of life, safety, and rights of the citizens, and has exemplified the best practices in the conduct of its responsibilities, and therefore is hereby, upon the recommendation of the members of the governing board, the Wiley group awarded this certificate of accreditation effective of eleventh day of October twenty twenty-four.
We'll be working, we need to celebrate this.
Yes, uh, I, I first and foremost, I want to, um, give a thanks to my staff. Uh, and especially to Ellen um, for her hard work and dedication. Ellen is not only my accreditation manager, but Ellen also holds the position of my property evidence room manager uh, at the police department, which is one of the highest liability areas that we could have within a police department. And she managed this process in eighteen months, which normally takes agencies anywhere twenty-four to twenty-eight months to get through um, without any issue. Um, and in addition to her normal job duties, so Ellen, thank you so much for what you did for this agency and what you continue to do, cuz I know the next three years is definitely gonna be a challenge, and we've already started the process of reaccreditation, so. Right, secondly, I'd like to thank, uh, the village board for your, your support of the police department over the last four years that I've been the chief here. Um, this accreditation thing, um, means a lot to me. Uh, and to know that I had the support of the entire village board was tremendous help for us to be able to give what we wanted, so I do appreciate your support and thank you very much for everything that you do, and Jesse, thank you for your support as well. Finally, I'd like to recognize our citizens, because without our citizen's support, we couldn't exist. And I think that our citizen's support from the calls and the emails that the accreditation board received during our assessment was critical in their decision-making process to make, uh, Grafton Police Department an accredited agency. And so I wanna thank all of our citizens for their support and, um, their ongoing commitment to help us combat crime and make us one of the best agencies in the state.
Oh, I, yeah. Let's get a picture of you guys.
Stand up here with the board, and maybe we get.
Yeah.
Right.
Everybody get together.
Yeah. What you understand.
Hold on. We don't point. Great. Thank you. That's great news. Let's move on to the resolution approving the twenty twenty-five wage adjustment factor, which I think is pretty much a, uh, um, you know, like a regular reference to the beginning of the year.
This is, um, either late in the year or right away in the beginning of the year, um, by code, the, uh, village must bring forward and adopt a resolution, um, to set forth the cost of living adjustments, wage adjustments, um, for staff. Um, they are, they are included, already included in the adopted twenty twenty-five annual program budget, however, again, as mentioned, a, uh, formal resolution is required to enact, um, the, the cost of living adjustment. That being said, uh, this particular resolution just does set forth a two percent cost-of-living wage adjustment factor effective January one, twenty twenty-five, for regular, non-represented employees.
Very good, this is the resolution, uh, before we bring it up for discussion, we need a markroom in a second. I'll offer.
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
Hey, any discussions, questions, give away? Uh, any?
Um, Jesse, and, um, resolution indicates that the employees of the library are not governed by this? Does the newly-created fire department board, are they governed by this?
They're not, uh, the OC Nope. The OCFD sets their own pay scale, as does the, uh, library board. Um, they set their own, uh, wage adjustments as well. Yep.
Wait.
Um, yes, and I just wanted to comment that, um, absolutely, of course, I don't think any of us would object to a quota of two percent. Um, the cost of living is probably higher. Um, I am disappointed though that with the new consolidated fire department that there was no monies allocated for that yearly um, adjustment in, in the money that we give them. They could, you know, we give them a set amount every year, and every community does. So, um, as I understand it, there is no automatic increase every year um, because that wasn't negotiated. So, um, that's just pointing to me that we didn't do that for our fire department, but I do think our employees deserve this, they all deserve it.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Other? Question? All right, we have offer of motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, and that motion carries. Talk about the creative and next placement and development agreement relating to the public improvement self division.
Uh, this, I would actually turn it over to Assistant Administrator Wolf, um, as she was, uh, one of the team leads on, uh, these, uh, items coming forward with regards to these, uh, developments.
Yes, so this is the, um, development agreement, uh, creation and development agreement for Ox Ridge. It covers our, um, standard items that relate to public improvements, um, including phasing plans, um, water and sanitary sewer, uh, within the development, upsizing within the development. And then, um, there's an extensive area and somewhat unique to this development agreement regarding off-site sanitary sewer improvements. And that is starting on page three and going into four. Um, and I'd be happy to, to answer any questions about that. Um, we have our standard stormwater management, uh, agreement as, uh, included and as an attachment. And then, um, we also have some unique language on page seven regarding the parkland dedication. Um, in the past, the, the village's past practice has been that, um, if there is a parkland in a development or in subdivision, that it would be, um, included, uh, in a market, on a market basis from the property owner. Um, staff is recommending at, at this time for this development to do a combination, so to have, um, a portion of the, of the parkland that's needed, that is requested for the third, the west side of the village, where there to be, um, uh, about two acres would be dedicated for our ordinance. Um, and then the remaining land, if the village board decides, um, would be purchased by the village from the developer at, at a market rate at, at such time as, as the, the village is ready. Um, so it's a little bit different approach. Um, again, a portion would be, um, dedicated to the public, um, dedicated to the village. And in, in that way too, so I guess to take a step back and just to clarify, the village does have a park impact fee, and there's two parts to the park impact fee, a land dedication portion and then a portion, so we have to buy the land, and we also have to include it, um, with, um, classrooms and playgrounds and, and sidewalks and all sorts of things. Um, so for Ox Ridge, um, because this development, if the village board approves the development agreement, um, will be dedicating the land, will be removing that portion of the impact fee for these housing units in the subdivision, so they will only pay the improvement, um, value when each, um, builder comes in and receives their building permit for each individual home. So it, it, it's a little bit different, um, than we've done it in, in the past. And now it's our calculation for about part of the million two acres is, and as I mentioned, located on, on, um, page seven, and that is based on the recently updated impact fee analysis that, um, our consultant did earlier this year. Um, the rest of the development agreement is our, kind of our standardized language, um, and then there is a series of attachments. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you, Jessica. Um, we will look forward on, for instance, discussion in a moment in a second for pre-annexation and development agreement relating to public improvements in Ox Ridge subdivision. I'll make a motion. Okay, uh, any questions that come along with this from the board?
I guess I'll, uh, arrest, direct this to Director Wolf. Is it, uh, normally, as far as purchasing parkland goes, um, when we were mechanism is laid out there on page eight, suddenly going into a mechanism for paying for the additional parkland you have, both for the dedicated part, for the, the, it's around five acres. Is it normal or customary for the village to pay interest on the unpaid balance? And where does that interest number?
This is a little bit unique for this development agreement as well, um, we have not done this, um, approach in the past. So in this case, um, because land values are, um, high in Ozonki County as, as well as for, for this area of the village, um, we're proposing that we kind of do a, a, a pay-as-you-go a little bit, um, approach. And so the, um, federal government does, does not allow, um, like, what would basically be a zero interest loan um, for the payment of that, that land, um, so we can't just um, pay the total cost over time and, um, not expect that the developer would get, um, any interest as a result of, of that, um, payment. Um, so our training, my program has, um, I did some research and found that the, um, interest rate of four point one eight is the minimum interest, um, that can be used or applied for a person, like a, a loan, um, in this kind of situation.
For a loan of this term, uh, trustee Schwartz says, I'm sorry, for a loan of this term, um, the IRS actually publishes applicable federal rates, and this was the lowest rate that, uh, but he's, uh, your, your director has given a good explanation, essentially, the direct, the developer can't give a, a free, give us a free loan, or the IRS might impute him interest, charge him interest as if he got it, which he didn't get it, so we're setting the lowest interest rate that the IRS will accept.
Oh, thank you. Good questions. So I think it's, it's a good idea for us to, they're moving on, they may come back. So we have a motion and a second, uh, I'll take a vote on this, seeing there's no more discussion, uh, looking to approve the pre-annexation and development agreements relating to public improvements in Ox Ridge subdivision, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries. Uh, let's go to the First Amendment with pre-annexation agreement relating to the public improvement, we still have our, um, subdivision.
Similarly, I, I would turn it over to, uh, Assistant Administrator Wolf.
Um, first item, I'll just note, um, the board may remember, we did a minor amendment to the Stonewall Farms Development Agreement in twenty twenty-two, actually, so we'll be naming this development agreement the Second Amendment, um, to the Stonewall Farms, um, just a technicality there. There are just, um, two items that would need to be addressed for, um, related to Stonewall Farms. First is the timing and connection to the water power. Um, the village board did have a discussion on this previously and, um, determined that, uh, the developer would be allowed to have a hundred and twenty days following the village board approval. I think that may be a little bit different than, than what was, um, initially discussed. There was a, um, a firm date, I believe it was set in February or March, um, we have had to delay, um, the, the actions, um, on the development agreement amendment, um, so the developer wanted to change that to allow a little bit more time for connection, and staff is comfortable with that change. And then the second, um, section, uh, section number two is again related to those off-site sanitary sewer improvements. Um, the, again, the improvements that will happen going to Ninth Avenue and then from Ninth to Eleventh Avenue in the station, and then from Eleventh to the actual wastewater treatment plant, um, Stonewall Farms, both Stonewall Farms and, um, Ox Ridge will pay a portion of those based on the number of, uh, units in that development.
Very good, um, so we will look for a motion in a second to discuss the Second Amendment to the pre-annexation agreement related to the public improvements in Stonewall Farms subdivision, and before this gets signed, we'll play the vote.
I'll second.
Your motion in a second, thank you very much. Uh, any questions or discussions with this? I, again, I know this has been, uh, pretty well negotiated with, um, with LuKem, and, um,
Okay, talking about difficulty.
Lisa, can you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, just have in the past possibility, with the possibility of difficulty in the winter with connection, is that part of the reason? That we wanna wait till spring?
Yes, absolutely, so the, the work can actually be done now, but making that connection has to wait, um, until, yeah, there, there's not a long time.
Okay. I, I think Mr. Thomas talked about that there was some challenges with getting contractors at a specific date as well, correct? So I think that's where we kind of look there, extending this to make sure it happens, so it works for all of us. Other questions, comments? And we have a motion in a second for the Second Amendment to the pre-annexation agreement related to public improvements in Stonewall Farm. I look for a vote at this point in time, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. And that motion carries. We'll move to number three. Uh, which will be to approve a right-of-way, uh, license agreement for Milwaukee Hill House at twelve way thirteen drop a windbreak canopy. Kind of windy and rainy over there, isn't it?
Uh, yes, apparently, um, to the extent where the owner of the Milwaukee Hill House has approached the village requesting, um, approval of what we're calling a right-of-way license, which would allow the extension of this small, um, windbreak type structure, um, in essence, a small entryway, uh, type of canopy, um, to be built into what is actually public right-of-way. Um, the term of the license agreement is ninety-nine years and we would renew automatically. Um, we are recommending approval of the, uh, uh, right-of-way license as presented with the IFC for the portion of Thirteenth Avenue in front of the main entrance of the, uh, restaurant. Um, that said, this is, uh, worked its way through the Architectural Review Board as well as legal review, um, and is finally before the, uh, village board this evening for consideration.
Thank you very much, Jesse, so we'll be looking to bring this to the table for discussion. Uh, we need a motion in a second to approve the right-of-way license agreement for Milwaukee Hill, that will set twelve way thirteenth avenue, drop a windbreak canopy in the thirteenth avenue right away.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion in second, any questions, comments? Yes, uh, Lisa.
Um, I just have a few, um, how close is the, uh, western wall to the actual curb? I looked back, uh, to the architectural review, looked at the pictures. It looks there, it's both. It is, I'm sorry, Justin. Um, I would estimate um, a foot, oh, okay. It's kind of halfway, um, in between. And it's kind of halfway in between or halfway on the red stamped portion?
Yeah.
If that makes sense, yes.
Mm-hmm. It, it, it's up there, going on page two. I do have to do that. It looks to be above a foot.
Yes, I do know that the, the, the building owners are responsible for replacing the red concrete that they will be anchoring into. So yes, it, it is approximately a foot to eighteen inches back from curb. So the, the reason for the opening, the way the opening is structured is to allow the pedestrian traffic through, but yes, still give some coverage to their front door. Yeah.
And then, and then my last question, Jessica, was are there any other businesses that have a type of structure like this, you know, kind of in the public right-of-way? And is there any zoning ordinance against this?
Well, there, we did do a license, a right-of-way license agreement, if you recall, for the lumberyard. For a, a portion of the building that will permanently be within the public right-of-way. That was a somewhat different kind of unique circumstance because it was in what was, you know, squeeze right-of-way. The village never kind of dedicated back to the public, I guess. So that was a, a unique situation. There are certainly canopies over sidewalks downtown that, that extend over. But no different structure that is anchored into the, the right-of-way area or the sidewalk area. So I don't believe that there, I mean, technically, the zoning ordinance doesn't address properties that aren't on private property. This is not on private property. So this technically doesn't apply to the zoning ordinance. It doesn't technically apply to it. It, it's kind of a, kind of a gray area a little bit, but I, I'm not concerned about as, as far as zoning goes.
Okay, hopefully that will work out for that because it's, it is a tight area then between the doors and the curb, so.
They already have some type of a, a empty ways there.
They, they do use a, a temporary enclosure structure during the winter. They would like to remove that permanently and just have this windbreak.
Lisa, are you done with questions?
My question was a little bit progressed, but.
Okay. Any further questions, Thomas? As we have a motion in a second, if they get the vote. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that motion carries. Let's go to report of the Planing Commission, rule of annexation request by Mr. Tillman for annexation petition of land. Salt Cedar Creek Road Parcels zero three dash zero one four dash zero two dash zero zero one dash zero zero and zero three dash zero one four dash zero four dash zero 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 dot zero zero. Located in the town of Cedarburg, including public right-of-way with conditions. We would like to take that one.
I, I would defer to Assistant Administrator Wolf as she shepherded this, the, both of these proposals through Plan Commission and was the lead on the review.
So the, the proposed preliminary flat is to include the concept plan that the, the Plan Commission reviewed. And I'd be happy to, to answer any questions. Again, there are both under the current preliminary flat, there are single-family lots and then area for potential future condo units that is not defined yet. As of yet, so again, the, and then the zoning items are item number two there. And it does include the changed zoning for the single-family, the multi-family as well as the, the future parkland. Then you have any answered questions?
Okay, very good. I'll bring to this discussion will need a motion in a second.
I'll need the motion.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. So if you have any questions, both of us, let's give them up. Andy?
I guess by a question I had addressed to Mr. Herbert. Under section three of the annexation agreement, it says repayment of property taxes. So essentially the village of Grafton compensating the town of Cedarburg for this annexed property. Is that a one-time payment? Is that an annual? What, how is that?
It's a one. It's upon annexation, it's paid over five years and it, it's a, essentially there's a snapshot in time of the, of the date of annexation and that amount of taxes for that property is paid to the town over five years. It's, it's a state law. The law changed. It used to be some litigation between towns and, and villages and cities. The ability for the town to litigate was taken away by statute and return. Town gets five years of tax payments.
So it's, it's the same payment over five years. It's not, it's not a single.
Annually, annually over five years, correct?
But I, I, I believe that the developer is wanting to pay that. Yeah, the, the village is not paying that to the town.
Any, any other questions? All right. We have a vote at this point in time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. And that motion carries. We'll go to our second motion here on Fox Ridge. The motion will pre-zoning land south of Cedar Creek Road. We'll go through the parcels again, ten dash zero one four dash zero one dash zero zero one dash zero 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 three dash zero one four dash zero two dash zero zero one dash zero zero and zero three dash zero one four dash zero four dash zero 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 dash zero zero, or point zero zero from row holding thirty-five to that, that single-family four and, and that fourteen multi-family residential four three, I mean PR Park and Recreation. Buildings of this subdivision, none as Fox Ridge. Any questions on that right now? Jessica, anything? Pretty much the same.
Anything else to add? Unless, unless there are questions.
Okay, very good. Need a motion in a second to bring this to table for discussion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve in a second here. Any additional questions? Hearing none seen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that motion carries.
Bill, Bob.
Okay, very good. We'll look next to report of the Public Safety Committee approval for no-cost auto state training for Officer Breck Buehler to attend the hazardous materials operations training through the Center for Domestic Security.
Absolutely. This item comes, is recommended out of the Public Safety Committee through a federal program that would cover travel, lodging and meals. Officer Breckenbuehler is able to attend a US Department of Homeland Security sponsored hazardous materials operations training. This is actually a complimentary training to a current assignment that Officer Breckenbuehler is involved with as far as he is currently an instructor with our traffic incident management program. This hazardous materials operations class does work in concert with the program, that, the traffic incident management program. Because hazardous materials can occur, whether it be a train derailment or vehicle fuel or what have you, in many different scales. So these are, this is a complimentary training that is being funded through the federal government. That said, it is in, in form a scholarship, if you will. However, we have treated these as donations in the past and therefore we are following our donation policy to ask for village board approval of the funding.
And just for clarification, I know I discussed this morning, this is a full, a full scholarship including travel and lodging. The only thing we pay for is the time.
His, his wages, yep, which we would be paying anyway. Yep.
Okay, very good. I look for a motion to recommend the board to approve the no-cost auto state training for Officer Breck, Breck Buehler to attend the hazardous material operation training through the Center for Domestic Security. Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that motion carries. Next, we'll look for the motions recommended the board to approve the acceptance of donation of fifty-dollar gift card from the Wondrock family and the donation of a flashlight to the district police department if approved.
Make a motion? I'll start it.
I don't think we really, it's pretty well explained at this point in time. So any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. That motion carries. Motion to recommend the village board authorize chief of police to enter into a contractual agreement with Lexus Nexus provide that there are no cost solution by crash for disseminating crash reports and to approve a change to our current fee schedule to charge state of Wisconsin grade of six dollar per accident report for commercial request be approved. Probably a little bit better discussion for explanation here.
Certainly, I can give a bit of an overview. Chief Kapanera can fill in any blanks if you will. This is coming recommenda, by recommendation through the Public Safety Committee to establish this, enter into this service agreement to establish what amounts to an online portal for either private citizens or insurance companies or whomever may be interested to obtain crash reports or accident reports. Accident report fulfillment, record request fulfillment does account for about a third of the police department's total open records requests. So it is a significant volume of work for the police department and this service, which really is self-funding, hence the request to update our fee schedule as well. Does provide a web-based portal for folks to log into, request and purchase their accident report. That said, the fee would only be charged to commercial requesters while continuing to provide reports at no cost for individuals. So I want to be very clear about that on behalf of the police department. Lexus Nexus, the company is in charge of collecting all the fees and issuing them back to the village, ensuring no revenue loss. We have had legal review of this service contract with no concerns. That said, once again, the recommendation is coming forward from the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. This is going to be a time saver for. Okay, get the motion in a second to bring this to the table.
Hold on a second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions here on this? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that motion carries. Finally, coming out of a, a public safety, we're looking for a motion to approve to recommend those who approve the acquisition of the AFR Engine software for an amount not to exceed one thousand four hundred forty dollars. Does that feel?
Certainly. While this budget, while this specific expenditure is unbudgeted, Chief Kapanera is looking to reallocate resources within his budget to achieve this fourteen hundred dollar expenditure. This comes to us due to the fact that we had been utilizing an outside law enforcement agency for facial recognition help, if you will. That said, the software company has said, no, 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 boy, no, they are not able to do that. They must have a individual license or they will take away the license of the outside agency that was assisting us and others for that matter. So nobody wanting to lose their license or ability to utilize this facial recognition software. That said, we are coming forward and I support chief's recommendation here of purchasing the spatial recognition software. Again, Chief Kapanera understands he will have to reallocate some of his resources within his budget to achieve this purchase. That said, it is a significant part of our investigative process and it is money well spent. So that being said, not only from an administration standpoint, am I in support of it, but it is also coming recommended, recommended from the Public Safety Committee.
Very good. Thank you, Jesse. I will look for a motion in a second to bring this to the table for discussion.
Motion three.
Hold on a second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions on this?
I, I just had a comment. I look back at the public safety minutes and the explanation was excellent. And the request for this was excellent. I had a tough time finding them though because they, they couldn't find the complicity in it in our information. Yeah, I had no idea with advanced facial recognition. So I think this is a great thing. Yeah, it, it would have been nice when I had the, the information on this. I don't know how many other things.
Thank you for your comments. We think. Any other question? For the village government, please report.
Yes, very happy to report. We have a punch list meeting to walk through the Veterans Park Pavilion later this week. That is step one in closing out the project. This is where we do a ground level walkthrough of the facility, identify any outstanding items, either large or small. Really, we are down to small items. That being said, we anticipate being able to start renting the facility by March. So we're pretty excited about that. Right now, one of the big outstanding items are the countertops do remain on back order. We do anticipate those being in and received and installed either end of January, early February. So very excited about coming to the end of this great project and looking to get it open and available to the public sooner rather than later. Pretty exciting news there. That being said, another item to report, bids have been received for the traffic signal project at Falls Road and Port Washington Road. Initial review is that they are quite favorable with regards to coming in under budget. That said, they will review, they will be reviewed in detail for possible award of the project at our next Board of Public Works meeting. This does keep the village on track for construction of those traffic signals this year. Lastly, just by way of providing context with regards to development and, and the level of workload, the high level of workload on our community development department. The Seasons, the multi-family development just south of Cornerstone Church on Port Washington Road. They do continue to keep our community development department busy. They recently submitted their planned inspection schedule for twenty twenty-five all the way through the end of this year and it outlines target dates for different benchmarks that are going to hit in which they would need state mandated inspections. That said, to date, they have hit all of their previous benchmarks and to schedule literally with our community development department a year out is first of all impressive on their part and their building activity, but it is quite a volume of work and to be scheduling a year's worth of inspections i- in one fell swoop is quite impressive. But wanted to make the board aware that it, it's a good report in that it shows a lot of responsible development activity on behalf of the developer over there with that Seasons project, but also just the sheer volume which comes with any given project that, that we're balancing here in the village. So strong work by our community development department all the way around and just a good responsible development.
And just a side comment, it's nice to see lights on when you drive by in the night.
Yes.
Nice to see that the people are getting knocked by. Or Jesse, let's go to licenses. I'll take a motion in seconds for a motion to approve the issuance of operator licenses as presented.
Motion two for a second.
A motion in the second. Any questions? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. And that motion carries acknowledgement and approval of the gathering place for brewing company LLC eight eleven East Vienna Avenue, Milwaukee. Sell beer from Ethanol beverages and wine. That's a Hala Ale Works fifteen oh five Wisconsin Avenue, suite number seventeen. Grafton, Wisconsin from January fifteen, twenty twenty-five through March thirtieth. The attached application.
Certainly, thi- this is another step in the process of the transitioning of the operation of Sahala. Gathering Place Brewing Company will be taking over the operation of Sahala Ale Works here in Grafton. That being said, the name and operations are to remain the same. However, it would be a new operator and that new operator needs to be licensed. This is one of the steps to ensure that smooth transition of operation so service or their business would not be interrupted.
Very good. We'll need a motion in a second for acknowledgement and approval of this.
I'll make a motion. Hold on a second.
A motion in a second. Any questions? Again, hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Put a report bills, the approval of the village expenditures for one million one hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred seventeen two dollars and sixty-eight cents. We need a motion in a second.
Motion three. Okay.
I didn't see any questions that are out there.
No, sir.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that motion carries. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Good motion in a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks.